Yes, Carl.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. There is a change in the recommended action on Agenda Item Number 10. And if you will turn to that item, you will see Recommended Action Number 2. If you would delete that and in its place, the Recommended Action Number 2 would be as follows. Transfer $21,275 from Council Contingency Account 19300-5401.001 and $21,275 from the Redevelopment Agency Fund Balance to Expenditure Account Number 13000-5161.001 for this project.
Thank you, Carl. Did you want to make a comment about the additional Item 12A as well while you're on it?
Yes, Item 12A. We have a supplemental agenda that does add Item 12A. It is not a subsequent need item because this item was added by an amendment to the agenda.
Very good. Counsel?
Do we have that information or are we going to get that information?
I believe you already have it.
Where?
Supplemental, the addendum to the agenda also had the staff report attached to it.
Oh, yeah, I read it.
Do the other council members have a copy of it? Frank, you've got it, and I have it as well.
And that's on consent? Is that on consent?
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any items you want to discuss have pulled?
Mayor, I've received three requests to speak on Item Number 10.
Item Number 10, we have speakers.
Are they, may I ask Madam Clark if they are speakers in favor of the item?
They are all supporting the recommendation. They are all representing, two of them are representing the Historical Society.
If they're all in favor, do they want to still speak? Raise your hands if you want to still speak.
Yes, they do.
Do? We have somebody who wants to speak? Okay.
Very well. Shall we go to our speakers on Item 10? Very well.
Is the council ready for a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Better than that.
I'll second.
There are no objections. So ordered. Moving to the minutes of September 16th.
Can we move them all at once? I would be, okay, I would like to move the minutes of September 16th, September 17th, September 23rd, and September 30th.
Who said second? She did? Marcia?
I did. I seconded.
You too? Good, we've got two seconds. We're good to go. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Okay, now moving over to consent item. We've got three speakers on Item Number 10. We'll begin by inviting Leon Warden up, followed by Alan Pollock, followed by Pat Salator. Leon?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I want to thank you for taking this step. It's important. And, you know, I've heard good things about the contractor you're planning to hire, and I've heard that the LA Conservancy smiles upon the city's action in this direction. I have one area of concern, and that is with the goal of achieving a records search for all properties in the city to determine what's historic and what isn't. You know, the city's new, the town is old, and the county assessor records that go back to the 1800s are a mess in many cases. A simple record search isn't going to achieve what I think you want to achieve, which is a comprehensive list of, you know, historic properties in town. It's not gonna, it's not gonna, you know, go all the way to do that. In certain cases, you just need to have eyeballs on the properties in order to know what's there. I mean, you know, you've got houses that were built in Pico Canyon in the 1880s, moved to New Hall in the 1920s. What's the property record gonna show? Well, it's gonna show that it was built in the 1920s. Now, is that a house that was, is that an old house from New Hall in the 1920s? Or is that a historic 1880s Mentiville house that relates to our oil history? You know, you're not gonna know from just the county assessor records. San Fernando Road, Spur Street, Main Street was widened in 1935 and all the buildings were changed. If you have a building that was first erected in 1900, sometimes the property record shows that it was built in 1935. Sometimes it shows some other date. You don't know just by the records. You know, there are a lot of architectural, there are a lot of buildings and historical features and things like that around town, especially in some of the rural areas, that don't show up on any record. I mean, you know, there's a, there's a 1998 train station in New Hall, and there's no piece of paper in the world that's gonna tell you that it's got a 1908 bell in it, unless you go to the building and see a plaque that tells you that. So, you know, there are a lot of things in town where a record search will not be enough to tell you whether or not something is historic. You've just gotta have eyeballs on it. So, I would, I think this is easily rectified. I would encourage counsel to direct staff to instruct the contractor to meet with stakeholders such as the Historical Society to determine what parts of town need an eyeball survey to complement the record search. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Our next speaker is Alan Pollock.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and City Council Members. I'm Alan Pollock, President of the Santa Clarita Valley Historical Society and representing the society tonight. And we do have members of the society scattered throughout the audience tonight, including docents, board members, and even one of our haunt builders here to support this tonight.
Have you got your letter yet, sir?
Yeah.
Wanted to be sure.
It's actually right here. I haven't opened it up yet.
Go ahead.
"The SCV Historical Society would like to commend the City Council for acting to preserve our historic structures by passing the temporary historic preservation measure last month. We are also strongly in favor of hiring the Historic Resources Group, the Consultant Group, to survey the current structures on the historic preservation list, and in addition, structures throughout the city of Santa Clarita, to determine which buildings are truly historic in significance and deserve to be protected by what we hope will be a permanent historic preservation ordinance. This is a well-respected organization to retain for this project. We also feel the Historical Society should be consulted as well and given input into the process of surveying the buildings in the city, as we believe we have the local expertise and resources to help these outside consultants make the best possible determinations as to which structures need to be protected for the long term. As Leon just said, we also would recommend that the city consider doing an onsite search of buildings in the city rather than just the record searches, as we feel that we may be missing some important historic structures if we just do it on paper as opposed to looking right at the sites. So, in conclusion, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for taking this important step towards preserving the historic heritage of Santa Clarita."
Dr. Pollock, thank you very much for coming for us, and thank you for the entire Historical Society. You do great work for our community. Our last speaker on this item will be Pat Salator. Pat?
We have so many, so few really old buildings in Santa Clarita. They burned over the years in a place where water is at a premium and sometimes not available at all. Then there is a common California kind of attitude that everything new is better and that old stuff must make way for the new and improved, and the trendy, and for progress. California has always seemed to thrive on the latest, but California does have a soft spot for history, too. One expression of this is through the Mills Act. One thing we would like to see the city be proactive about in formulating the permanent historic preservation ordinance is this piece of California Government Code. The LA Conservancy calls it "the single most important economic incentive program in California for the restoration and preservation of qualified historic buildings by private property owners." This program allows qualified participants to receive property tax relief by as much as 40% to 60% reductions in their property taxes, in exchange for their commitment to maintain the property and their historic character. 40% to 60%, that is not chum change. With incentive like that, the potential preservationists ought to be standing in line to get signed Homeowners in other places in Southern California have already caught on. Santa Monica has over 40 Mills Act contracts. West Hollywood has 70. And LA City has over 340 Mills Act contracts with property owners. The SCV Historical Society suggests that you, the city of Santa Clarita's decision-makers, make sure that this is available to the owners of these historic properties. Make sure your criteria for historic fits our collection of old buildings, that the owners of these buildings are counseled by staff who know the rules and can help them create contracts for our historic building owners. The society really wants to be involved with this process. We really want to see our city's treatment of historic structures be a model for other places. And one other thing that I'd like to be considered is that as we make up a historic preservation ordinance, that we consider that history didn't stop being made 50 years ago from today, and that history is being made constantly. We need something in this ordinance written in that makes the consideration of what is historic and what is not dynamic, so that as we find things that are historic, we can add them to the list or have them considered even if they're not on the list at current. And I think that that's a really important concept for us to consider.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, any further discussion on the consent items?
I just have a couple comments on this, on Item 10, before we pass it on. I think it really is critical and vital, and I know staff's gonna do it, to have a very close working relationship between the consultant, city staff, and the Historical Society in working on the different items, because they are hands-on with the history. They have as much data as anybody's got, and if we find more, they're gonna be custodians of that as well. And I think it's, this is critical. There are places all over the country that we go and visit and wanna take vacations because there's wonderful history, and it's charming and unique, and it makes the community special, and people wanna walk and look at it and think about it. And today, we can plaque things with not only words but also photographs, so you can actually see what was there, if it's not still there, or you can see the way it has changed, if it is there, and the way it originally looked. And we have a lot of opportunity that we didn't have. And I do believe that Pat brought up a wonderful opportunity, and the Mills Act is something that we should look at and see how it's worked for other cities in helping them preserve their history and bring on a respect and a commitment to future generations for that linkage, which I think we value because we are so unique. And I would be remiss, and I would get killed by Pat if I didn't say it, the Heritage Haunt. If you'd like tickets, information, please go to scvhaunt.com. That way I'd be off the hook, at scv.haunt.com, and for a fabulous time over at Historic Heritage Junction. And counsel, thank you very much. You've just been so great.
Thanks, Lorraine. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. I guess I have good news for the Historical Society. This is not just a records research. The proposed contractor does have eyeballs, and they will consult with all of the stakeholders, and that certainly includes the Historical Society.
Thank you very much, Ken. With the changes that were given to us by our city attorney, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
That includes Item 12A?
It does.
I would so move.
Is there a second? A second for Frank Ferry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pertim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, could we have a five-minute break?
Counsel, take a quick five-minute. You've got it. Five-minute break, ladies and gentlemen. We'll resume our council meeting. We're moving over to Item Number 13. We'll open up the public hearing. This is a hearing on objections to the proposed removal of a nonconforming sign located at 24811 Railroad Avenue. And I see that the recommended action is that we continue this item till November 25th. Any discussion or motion, counsel?
Move to continue.
We have a motion to continue?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pertim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to Item Number 14. This is under new business exploration into an arts commission versus the existing arts advisory committee for the city of Santa Clarita. And I see we have Rick Gould. Rick, are you prepared to make comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to be somewhat brief tonight. Once again, my name is Rick Gould. I'm the Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, and thank you, Mayor and council members. Approximately 10 years ago, the City Council approved the Cultural Arts Master Plan Phase 2. In that document, it called for the City Council to create an arts advisory committee that would take a leadership role in the community on advising the City Council and the city on the development of art throughout the entire Santa Clarita area. That advisory group is one of a small number of committees that the council has set up to advise them on issues. The other significant committee is the New Hall Redevelopment Committee. The current arts advisory committee has been functioning since 2001 and is currently made up of 12 members that represent a cross-section of the community, and a list of those positions is included in your staff report, so I won't read all 12 for you, but it covers a broad cross-section of private, public, and school members throughout the valley. Currently, the membership of the arts advisory committee is at approximately seven members of the 12 are currently filled. There are some vacancies available on the current arts advisory committee today. The arts advisory committee has been charged with being the selection body for a number of public art pieces in town and assisting with the arts groups in distributing arts grants and a number of other types of activities. They have done a number, they've accomplished a number of things over the last couple of years, again included in your staff report, but significantly, they've participated to a large degree in the Street Art Festival, which we just concluded, the California Bear Project, and they have worked in providing money to some of the groups for performances at the College of the Canyon Santa Clarita Performing Arts Center. As the arts advisory committee has evolved, the group has indicated an interest to grow their relationship with the City Council and the city, and to have, take a larger leadership role in how their voice is heard throughout the community. To that end, they met with the City Manager and Mayor Keller in, on August 21st of 2008 to discuss the future role of the arts advisory committee, and at the request of Mayor Keller, this item is before you tonight. And that discussion about whether the arts advisory committee should continue in its present form or some other form, or be transformed into an arts commission is the concept. At this point, the staff is recommending, since this item is new to a number of you tonight, that staff go back and perform a complete analysis of what it means to continue the arts advisory committee, or what it would, what it would mean to bring forward an arts commission and all of that entails. And I'm available for any questions. I also have in the audience with me Phil Lantis, who is the person in charge of our Arts and Events Section in Parks and Rec, and he can answer any questions. He has been the staff liaison to the arts advisory committee over the last several years. And I'm available for any questions, should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions to Rick before we invite our speakers to come forward? You ready? Okay, we have a number of speakers on this item, and I'd like to begin with Bob Spear, be followed by Sandra Fisher, followed by Tony Gordon. Bob Spear?
Whoa, the disadvantage of following Rick. Move this thing down a little. Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, thank you all. We all care about art. There's no question about that. We care about literature. We invest in libraries. We care about performing arts because we support our theaters and our concert series. We care about visual arts because we have the Street Art Festival and murals in New Hall, and we wanna make downtown New Hall a theater and arts destination. We have art fairs in some of our parks, and we have art displayed in our public buildings. We know that participation in arts programs can teach us about other cultures, about other beliefs, about other times in history even, and about creativity. Maybe what you don't know, but I'm sure you would agree with, is that the President's Committee on Arts and Humanities has reported that one of the most important aspects of art shows in the results of extensive studies that have proven that students who participate in the arts score higher on SAT tests regardless of socioeconomic status. A U.S. Department of Labor Commission found that the arts instill foundational skills needed for employment and also for life, skills like reasoning, decision-making, and thinking creatively and solving problems. A U.S. Department of Justice study found that young children who participate in after-school arts programs have shown a decrease in negative behaviors and increase in attention span, commitment, and tolerance. And there's my favorite, I think Pablo Picasso put it best when he said, "Art washes away from the soul the dust of everyday life." Now, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, and I know you don't disagree with any of that. What I'm here to do is support either an arts commission or expanded role for the arts council, because I feel that we need to centralize all art-related efforts in a group with only one concern, art, to ensure exposure to all forms of art, and to ensure that all parts of the city are equally served with respect to art. Why a commission or added responsibilities or accountability for the arts council? Simply that. Responsibility, authority, and accountability will make a difference as opposed to just an advisory role. So I would strongly support your study. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Our next speaker will be Sandra Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and honorable council members. My name is Sandy Fisher. I'm a 13-year resident of Santa Clarita and currently the Acting President of the Santa Clarita Artists Association, which was started in 1989. Tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of the establishment of an arts commission and not just further research on whether we should have one or not. The city of Santa Clarita, with its growing population and geographic proximity to the entertainment industry, has access to an increasing amount of artistic talent in both the performing and visual arts. Many of these talented individuals have joined together to form numerous nonprofit arts organizations with the intent of expanding the cultural offerings available to the residents of Santa Clarita. Unfortunately, the local nonprofit arts sector, as with others across the nation, continuously struggle for sustainability as a result of decreasing public and private funding, combined with limited access to facilities and skilled volunteers. At the same time, the residents of our city are expressing a greater desire for more arts-related events and ongoing programs, while the city strives to meet this growing need by providing its residents with events such as the Cowboy Festival, Street Art Festival, and Concerts in the Park. Generally, the city events offer more passive experiences that are limited to a day or weekend, leaving an unmet need for more continuous and hands-on arts programming. The establishment of an arts commission would act as a catalyst in bringing government, arts and culture, and the public sector together for the cultural benefit of all citizens of Santa Clarita. Cities that have established arts commissions are able to expand the impact and maintain the viability of the existing local arts organizations by providing marketing support, developing mailing databases and arts registries, increasing public awareness regarding the value of the arts, fostering greater collaboration on events between various arts organizations and individuals, creating opportunities to showcase the talents, initiating arts education programs, and generating greater access to both private and public funding. In doing so, these cities create vibrant and vital communities. An investment in the arts through the establishment of an arts commission will undoubtedly attract new businesses and skilled professionals, spur redevelopment and revitalization, generate increased revenues for local businesses, expand tourism, maintain housing values, and most importantly, give the residents of Santa Clarita proof of our commitment to the values of our nation which embrace culture, character, and civilization. An abundance of cultural art activities means the difference between living and simply existing. So I urge you to support really living in Santa Clarita and establish an arts commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Our next speaker is, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, is it Tony?
Zoni.
Zoni?
Zoni.
Zoni Gordon, thank you, followed by Jaleen Armstrong, followed by Tim Binboydston.
Mayor Keller and the City Council Members, City Manager Paul Skumpf, and you could see, most people in red here are our peers in the art to express our passion for art this evening. My name is Zoni Gordon, and I represent both the Santa Clarita Creative Guild, of which I'm the president, and the Santa Clarita Artists Association as an active member, and I'm also an artist. I have very positive thoughts and optimism to support the direction of the city establishing, hopefully, a solid group, which will be called the City Art Commission. And I'm not, whether or not you disband or consolidate is really not my reason for coming here, but just establish, however, it will be a solid art commission for the city. It is timely and about time that an action of this nature happen and get approved in one of the most beautiful and peaceful cities in the world. Santa Claritas, Santa Claritans, including my family, are very proud to be living here for more than 12, 13 years. We can even be prouder when art and culture get embedded and attached to our city's name. I would love to see the city and our leaders be in the forefront, not just an advisory, but more to help us in making major decisions and helping support our activities, in promoting art and culture to the community and beyond, as all our nonprofit organizations and other art groups are doing. This art commission should be our partner and an active supporter of the various activities of these groups. I now challenge you, and I will pledge utmost support wherever it's needed, and I will help promote our valley as a pillar of arts, hence the name. Maybe we could change that later, Santa Clarita Valley. We are a valley that appreciates art and culture. Please approve this measure. We are all behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoni. Jaleen Armstrong?
My name is Jaleen Armstrong. I'm a retired art educator. I taught art for 26 years, to elementary, middle school, and college classes in art education. I have lived in Santa Clarita since 2003. As I traveled around the city and learned about the different areas, I found the city to be very clean and an abundance of beautiful trees and parks. I looked for art galleries, an art museum, an art center that could hold art workshops, and I only found one art gallery next to the Hyatt, which now is no longer existing. There is another art gallery now on Sierra Highway, which I have visited. I saw two pieces of public art at the town center, and then I thought, wow, where is the art? And I know that you have developed two or three existing things for many people to attend once a year, the Street Art Festival and the Cowboy Program. I moved here from Madison, Wisconsin, the capital of Wisconsin, which is an older city and is very much an art city, that has much city support for the arts. The mayor there was successful in having the Frank Lloyd Wright Convention Center built, which took quite a bit of time, and I was on one of his committees. So here, I've told you a little bit about me, but I am here tonight to speak to you about the importance of the arts, and especially the visual arts and public art, and to support the importance of an art commission, a cultural arts commission, to be created for Santa Clarita. Today, the art world here stands in a decidedly ambivalent relationship to the Santa Clarita Valley community. So what would this commission do? This commission would plan different kinds of programs for the community to be offered, such as art workshops, art films, art lectures, art demonstrations, special art exhibits, and visiting artists to talk about their art and to bring displays of art to exhibit. However, the commission would have to find places that could be used for these kinds of art activities. These are programs that need to be offered weekly, monthly, and continuously, and varied and published. and published on an art calendar, created quarterly, and posted in the newspaper, television, or a city newsletter, letting the public in Santa Clarita know of these programs as well as people in other cities. The more involvement the public and residents have in these varied art events or venues, the more there will be economic return for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaylene. Next speaker is Tim Ben Boyston, to be followed by Judy Yumeck, followed by John Dow. Tim Ben?
Tim Ben Boyston, former city council member of the great city of Santa Clarita and currently the executive director of the Canyon Theater Guild in Old Town New Hall. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I know comes a great disappointment to you that I am not going to speak a long time on this issue, only to say that I do support the formation of a commission, the sooner the better, if the little city of Sausalito, California, can, with its population of seven thousand five hundred, have an arts commission. I think it's time for us to have an arts commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Judy Yumeck?
Not going to talk about the bell. Actually, I, I bring the regards of Dr. Judy Fish, who could not be here this evening, as she is out of the country with her family. And I do want to, my colleague over here, Paul De La Serra, we basically want to speak to the needs of visual and performing arts in the elementary education level and the success that a commission would have. What I do ask is that you look at a commission model that will have substance, that will have the ear of the decision-makers, and that will truly be able to bring to Santa Clarita what we need. We've recently been educated that there are several types of models we can be looking at. Our research shows us that children are gifted children, are at-risk children, are special needs children, all benefit from visual and performing arts, and creating this commission, I think, would assist all the children in Santa Clarita.
Thank you, Paul.
And I'll just add that today, more than ever, our young people need this methodology of safe expression for communication, exploration, of course, the imagination, and cultural and historic understanding. And just as Judy Yumeck said, brain research really confirms that the arts education strengthens students' problem-solving skills, critical thinking skills, just adding to the overall academic success of our students. So we thank you for the consideration of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Dow, to be followed by Sherri Claus.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is John Dow. I am the marketing director for the Santa Clarita Symphony, and I'm president of the Dow Group, which is a boutique business consulting firm here in the Santa Clarita Valley. The good news is that we have a vibrant arts and entertainment community in Santa Clarita. You really don't need to leave the valley anymore to get your art fixed. We have performing arts, theater projects, CTG, the rep, COC Productions, music, we have the symphony, youth orchestra, concert band. If you like singing, master chorale, master college choir. Dance, the Santa Clarita Ballet, independent dance companies. Painting, visual arts. We have the Santa Clarita Artists Association, art galleries, family film festival. We have, of course, the City of Santa Clarita Productions and Special Events, Cowboy Poetry Festival, Amgen Tour, Concerts in the Park, street festivals. If that's not enough, in addition, we have fantastic educational assets. Cal Arts, College of the Canyons, Master College. We also have numerous charities, of whom I know we all attend, who import entertainment for their events. And we have a stellar Santa Clarita Performing Arts Center, and this is only a partial list, so no emails, please. But if any of this is news to you, that we need an arts commission. We, in order to fully realize the economic benefit of our arts organizations, some focus and assistance is required. First, the large landscape is badly fragmented, leaving many organizations competing with each other for the same dollars and the same performance dates. This leaves money on the table for both the city and the arts organizations, as well as lost opportunities for the organizations and potential audiences. Furthermore, organizations are engaged in similar activities in an uncoordinated fashion, resulting in market cannibalization and wasted effort. We're all trying to raise money. We're all trying to raise awareness. We're all trying to build skills, educate our children. We're all trying to bring culture to this community and increase the quality of life. The outcome, though, is that we are taking money from each other instead of raising more money, which benefits everyone. Independently, many organizations lack the capability to build and sustain their organizations. Business, donor development, marketing, audience development, arts education, it's an expensive business. We need help. So what? Santa Clarita faces a formidable challenge if we want to establish an arts and cultural environment on par with other major cities in America without the formation of an arts commission. First, an arts commission will rally the Santa Clarita community around the arts and culture to ensure that the Santa Clarita Valley has all the resources to become a competitive arts culture destination. Second, it's economically rewarding. Non-local audiences or cultural tourists spend twice as much as their local counterparts, about forty dollars to twenty dollars. Second, it's valuable local commerce. Every dollar spent on nonprofit arts and culture stays in our community. When you buy a ticket to the symphony or a play and art exhibition, you're supporting not only the artists, but the organization's staff, vendors, and local restaurants. In conclusion, we can reap the economic rewards by forming an arts council to shape, support, and market our city's existing assets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is now hiring. The Sheriff's Department will be hosting a Women in Law Enforcement Career Day, October twenty-fifth, from nine a.m. to 7 p.m. at College of the Canyons in Valencia. Come and see all the exciting and diverse opportunities that are available. Explore the Career Expo and take part in the available onsite testing that begins at ten thirty. Now is your chance to see what one of the most respected law enforcement agencies in the world has to offer. For more information, call one eight hundred A Deputy or visit them on the website at LESD.org.